We're at the 17th and we are starting earlier today than usual, but I would like to welcome everyone here and Dr. Cash, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
With pleasure. Please stand. Ready, begin.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a Spanish translation available this evening. Esperanza Villegas.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas y estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes necesita ayuda estoy en la parte trasera de esta sala. Gracias.
Thank you, Esperanza. We also have headsets available for the hearing impaired if anyone needs that. Okay, so this is a special workshop today and before we begin our workshop, which is, consists of a conference, one single conference agenda item about student discipline, we are open for public comment if anyone would like to make general public comments.
We do have one public comment, Nancy Bramson.
Why don't you come on over here to the podium. We're set up a little differently today because of our workshop, but we'd be happy to have you right here.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Bramson and I haven't been to a board meeting before, but I'm here really to thank Dr. Cash and I know he's new, but I thought it was really important because this is something I had been working on for three years and that is removing the grinding, freaking, moshing at our high school dances. And believe it or not, there are kids out there who wouldn't attend the dances because of that, especially young women. And I have sons, but they also didn't, felt very uncomfortable with that. And I know other schools, it's not cutting edge or anything, but I'm just really glad that after working on this for three years, that talking to Dr. Cash, it's happened and I really appreciate that and I thank you.
I wanted to make a few brief remarks before we begin our presentations today, a little bit about the genesis of the student discipline discussion. For some time now, the school board has been in discussion about our student discipline policies and as we've considered them and the ramifications of their implementation, we realized that we needed to take a big picture look at student discipline, at what was working, what wasn't working. And based on our own observations and community input, we knew there was room for improvement and likely there were more effective models for where, when students make poor choices, they could instead be prevented before they occur. And so today we'll be talking not only about the results of studies that our staff have done regarding our current expulsion, suspension rates, but also looking at, at possible models for a restorative justice model. And so we've got three components today to our presentation and Dr. Cash, maybe I'll turn it over to you at this point to describe those.
Great. Well, we're going to start with a little summary data of summary statements of our data on student suspension, truancy and expulsion and I've asked our honorary doctorate, Ms. Swawski, to lead off with that. We have Davis Dr. Hayden, who was responsible for generating all the data, all the, all the tables that you've seen and he'll be here to answer questions regarding that. And then we'll move on to what I think would be Mr. Sumner's portion on our own district's current policy administrative regulations and then an opportunity to look at a Denver Public Schools, which is probably the largest school district that's had a restorative discipline program for the longest period of time in operation. And he'll also discuss a little bit about their policies as well. You've had an opportunity to look at those. And then the last part will be a short introduction about restorative justice and discipline and a possible plan and timeline for looking at a possible pilot program in our district for the 2012-13 school year. And I've asked all of our secondary schools to have a representative here, administrative person here so that they can hear the conversation. There may be questions that those of us sitting up here can't answer, that they may be able to answer and I thought that their lens would be a good one for, for the board to have and for us to have during this conversation. I also asked Craig Price, District Counsel, to be present to address questions relating to issues about law enforcement on our campus, when, when school officials are required by law to contact law enforcement, when they are not. So having an idea that that is a question that may arise during this conversation as well. So that would be the format. And with that, if the board's ready, we could start with Ms. Swawski.
Thank you. And I, Dr. Hayden, do you want to put the memo up? Okay. Well, I'll start talking, but we noticed that probably not everybody in the audience there has the memo that the board members got. It was online. It's basically just an overview of the data for the last three years, from 2008, '09 to 2010, '11. And three areas of discipline. We included expulsion, suspension and truancy. And the suspension data does not include teacher suspension from classrooms. So it's, and, and also it doesn't include, occasionally there'll be a suspension that's kind of an in-house or at-school suspension. These are the suspensions where students are excluded from school. So they're gone for several days, one day, two, you know, five days or whatever, or they're waiting, awaiting expulsion. And then of course truancies. So I'll start with expulsions. I also should probably give a, in the preface, it states that overall socially economically disadvantaged students or status does not appear to affect the data, which was a bit of a surprise to us. In fact, the greater differences between Latino and white student discipline data are found in students identified with slightly higher social economic status. So therefore, living in poverty does not affect this at all, as far as what our data shows. On the expulsions, and I'm just going to briefly state the highlights here and we'll be waiting for that to come up. It's not there. Okay. Perfect.
We've been down internet wise, so, all day. No phones.
Just got it up, yes. Oh, thank you. Okay, so, that's great. So if, if you move on up there, just in bulleted form, basically between, on expulsions, between Latino male and white expulsions, when you correct for population size, at least the ratio with our student population, it's approximately a two to one ratio. So for every one white male student, there are two Latino students that are expelled. Female expulsions are too few to make some conclusions, but it could be as much as a four to one. All other groups are too few to report. The most frequent reason for male expulsions is controlled substances at 31 percent. The most frequent reason for female expulsions is also controlled substances at 63 percent. And then when you get to the by-school level, you can see that, that the number of suspension, expulsion, excuse me, on the copy that you have and that was online, it also gives totals. So across the elementary, middle and high school for '08, '09, there are a total of 49. It's not showing up there, but that's 49. In '09, '10, the total was 39 and '10, '11, the total was 43. Okay. Yes, yes, there was that as well. This was a draft copy of the straight data that Davis sent me. The special education students, when you look at in '08, '09, 18 special ed students. '09, '10 is 15 and in '10, '11, which is the wrong number there, there were eight students. So a little bit of a drop there from in three years, 18 to eight. Small numbers though. When you look at English proficiency, not a lot of difference there. When you look at the special education and English learners, so an English learner who is also identified and has an IEP with special education, a slight drop between 2008 and '09 with 12 of those students with those two identifications, down to four in 2010, '11. Moving on to, and I'm just going to give straight out report, I'm not, I'm not really making comments on the, the data. Suspensions. With population size corrected, it's approximately three to one ratio between male Latinos and whites. With population size corrected for females, it's six to one ratio between Latinos and whites. The most frequent reason for male suspensions was disruptive defiance, 28 percent. And for females, again, controlled substances at 23 percent, with a close second of disruptive defiance at 22 percent. At the school level on suspensions, going across 2008, '09, the total, which you don't have up there, but some of you have in front of you, is 3,710. The total in the next year, 20, 2009, '10 is 3763, so 53 or so increase. And 2010, '11, the total is 3,873. So a slight increase each year. Special education students, the note there is that going from '08, '09 to 2010, '11, there was a decrease, an increase in the middle, but a decrease in the end there at 738. Again, not huge, but it is a decrease. English proficiency doesn't look, looks pretty flat. There was some increase there in the middle in '09, '10. And in our special education, English learners, again, we see a slight decrease from 615 in 2008, '09, down in 2010, '11 to 462 English learners who are also identified as special education. And then moving on to truancies, there's no significant difference between male and female data. With the population size corrected, there's approximately a two to one ratio between Latinos and whites. The number at school level does significantly rise and I'll go across the totals that you won't see up there, but in 2008, '09, the total was 15,839 truancies. In 2009, '10, the total was 20,587 and the total in 2010, '11 is 22,341. So there was an increase there. That is the straight data, the brutal facts as they are.
So we, board members have questions? Would love to take those now or however you want to do it. We could certainly get into the policy conversation or talk about the data.
Before we, before we take questions, I think it'd be useful for the public to know our breakdown between our elementary students and enrollment wise and our secondary students because when we look at these numbers, they're predominantly secondary students. So when we want to calculate a percentage of population, we want to know the breakdown.
That's a good question. Right. And the, our secondary district, our secondary schools is about double, you know, approximately double in size. So if we have about, and this is very rough numbers, if we have about 15,000 students in our district, 500 are elementary and a thousand, not quite, are secondary.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Board members, Ms. Limon?
So before we move on to the policy discussion, do, can you say anything about the truancy increase of nearly 5,000 truancies in one year? What are the speculations on that?
I don't have any speculation on that because I don't know what was happening at the sites in terms of what changes may have been made. Maybe some of the site people could make a comment on that, but the data just is the data and that's what we have.
I, I will say that in '08, '09, the elementary 492 compared to just this last year, which is incorrectly marked on the, on the memo, to 2067, there had to have been a change in the way it was reported. No question there. So I don't know if there are site people in the room that could comment on the truancy or how it's reported, any changes in that regard or things that have happened at the site. Ms. Caines?
Good afternoon. Joanne Caines, Principal of La Combe Junior High. Just a point of clarification. If a student is marked truant and then they attend a Saturday school session, that truancy is eliminated. So the truancy numbers may not be actual numbers because it is corrected in the computer once they make up the time.
So then they're higher.
If I could kind of add to that just a minute, and I think Robin touched on it too, that, that blip between '08, '09 and '09, '10, which was before my time, and looking back at some of the data, it did indicate that there was some difference in process of reporting, actually which ones were truancies or not. And it might've had something to do with maybe the way the state was defining it. I don't know at that time, but there was a, a large jump in the percentage of truant students during that one year in, in the data quest or the state department of education website that was reported that year. But then you can see how it started to decline again. I'm sorry, it didn't decline, but it's, it's not as big a jump the next year, but it was, I think that big jump was a result of the way it was reported.
Ms. Cordero?
It seemed as if it was primarily in the elementary that we saw, I mean, an enormous jump from '08, '09 to '09, '10. And then continuing on. So I'm wondering if, if something happened in elementary that, that maybe accounted for the change in documentation for truancies or?
Well, if you were to look at the individual sheets that I know you have that go through each and every school, you'll notice that some schools have truancies and some don't. And it could easily be that changing principals who have different policies and how truancies are handled, there's lots of issues that in the elementary school especially, some of the schools really go to a great length to try and trace down the reasons and clear, clear up the truancies and other schools maybe not doing that. So, and like I say, principals come and go and the data shows that some schools have no truancies and some schools have a lot. So I think that there is a lot of variability that's going on here that the data will not speak to.
Mr. Heron?
Following up on, on Dr. Hayden, two comments that I noticed, just, is one, the discrepancy between high schools. You know, one high school is dramatic compared to the other two. And the other surprising factor was the, the, the female truancy seemed very high across the board compared to male. Any reason why female population would be more truant than male? I wouldn't have guessed that.
I think any comment or response to that would be pretty much speculation without actually delving into and asking kids and parents what's going on directly. I don't know if there's any way to determine the why of the difference in that.
Well, I guess my comment, third comment is, it seems to me where the main problem lies is in truancy. If we have, if we can solve a truancy problem, the suspensions and expulsions I think would be far less. But if it's, the truancy is what keeps kids out of school and therefore I think the tendency down, down the line is to maybe act out. So I, I'd like to see a real big emphasis on the truancy issue as well as working on suspension and expulsion, but the truancy is just increasing over a period of time. It just keeps going up and that's not a, that's not a good sign.
Mrs. Parker?
Just following up on Mr. Heron's comments because he brought out the fact that one of our high schools has such a dramatically different truancy rate. And I, I think I want to be clear to the public in particular that truancy can mean that you are just, that you skip a particular class. So when we're talking about these thousands, it's because a kid in one day can miss six at the secondary level. So, but it is in our policy that the high school that has the highest truancy rate, it's in our policy that they're an open campus nine through 12, but we have a different policy in place for the other two high schools. That's not part of our student discipline board policy, but that's something that if we're talking about truancies, we need to connect together in terms of open campus and what's working and what's not working and, and just sort of the structure of the facilities of the school because that's part of the reason why they are an open campus.
I'd like to make a slight correction there. These are all day truancies. We didn't do period truancies.
Oh, okay. So that would've been in the hundreds of thousands.
It would've been a lot more. And period truancies, we didn't do them because it becomes extremely complicated to, first of all, you can't compare them to elementary and then also there's a lot of complications involved with the period truancies. And another comment I'd like to make is that one of our database programmers actually in response to a query about the truancy program that we used to have, did a comparison between the last years we had that truancy program and today. And our truancy rate is actually over the last eight years has gone down. So quite a bit. So there is that to think about too.
And can I just clarify that although these are day truancies, they could be multiple students. So it's, it's not like we have thousands of single truant students. It might be one student who's truant 50 times, 100 times.
Exactly. Yes. The vast majority of my truancies are for one or two days, but there are some students that are, you know, quite a few days, yes. 30 days, things like that.
Mrs. Parker?
Can I just do a follow-up question with you on that? Dr. Hayden, you're saying that over eight or nine years, the truancy rate has declined where we see over three years it's increased. So were the numbers dramatically different? It was higher than 22,000 several years ago?
I can try and bring that up right away, but I believe they were. Let me check on that. Hold on.
That would just be good to know.
It, it sounds like with everything here, standardized reporting is going to get us better data. And so we, we realize that if schools aren't reporting truancies the same ways, it's, it's really hard to draw comparisons between those schools. And so having said that, I think maybe one of the recommendations we make going forward is we ensure that all school sites are reporting things the same way so that we can really be comparing apples to apples. And I agree with Mr. Heron that addressing truancy is, is a critical task for us because I think that's maybe where the preventative part of all this starts, is making sure that kids are really engaged in schools. Seguing to expulsions, I know that even though we, we don't like expulsions and we think that probably 49 are too many in this last year, in fact, since 2005, 2006, we've halved the number of expulsions. So for that year, we had 105 expulsions in 2005, 2006 and we've moved, actually we've moved to 40, is it 43?
Forty-three.
Forty-three for 2010, '11. One of the questions the board had when we first started this discussion about discipline was, is the fact that we moved from a two-strike policy for offenses and expulsion, related offenses, to a three-strike policy, if that had in fact accounted for the drop in the number of expulsions?
Well, a real quick check of that didn't indicate that there was much difference in that specific kind of violation from two-strike to three-strike, the consequences or enforcement. It was a pretty much, I mean, there was a slight variation, but nothing drastic to say that that's what had the effect or it was just a different year. So that was just a look at the last couple of years of data since that change took place.
Okay. But they, but they have been trending downward in the last, say, five or six years in general. Mrs. Cordero?
And again, I'm not sure if I have this.
You're on.
On, okay. I wanted to ask a question about the expulsions for the English proficiency segment, because you said there, there was not much difference between them. Are, and are, were you looking at just the ELS versus the EOs?
I was actually looking at between them, meaning the years.
Oh, the years.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So.
There is a difference, definitely. I mean, the, the EOs on the end of English only.
Yes.
So then we have our English learners are initially identified English proficient, meaning in like kindergarten when they come in, or when they first arrive and then are reclassified.
But it would be a relatively safe statement that the ELS, the IFEPs and the RFEPs are predominantly Latino students.
Oh, yes.
And the EOs are predominantly white students?
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on, on the data? Do we, I mean, I, I guess the elephant in the room is why are there so many more Latino students being expelled?
Right. I mean, maybe fewer.
As compared to the white students. And I don't, I, I don't know if this is a subjective process. I think the board, when expulsions come to us, try very hard to make sure that those kind, that those issues do not come into play. I guess we need to ask ourselves if it's happening at the site.
Sure. Well, I think that's a really fair and appropriate question to ask and I think the reality is there's really five offenses that we, there is a mandatory expulsion and the rest are not mandatory. It's, so I think it's a fair statement to say part of it has to be subjective when five offenses are, are clearly required by law, that, you know, finding a fact as a student engaged in that behavior, the board must expel. So absent that, then it's really, you know, up to the administrative panel, the school site administration and ultimately then the board to make that decision.
I could just mention one piece of that too, that even in those five, there's one that this board has written into the policy as a mandatory recommendation for expulsion, which is assault on staff. That's not one of the five, the big five, as we call it in the industry. But that one, this board has selected to put in their policy as a mandatory recommendation for expulsion.
Mr. Heron?
Yes. Just to put it in perspective, I'm sure you've all been reading the same things I've been reading, but this is a national problem. It's, let's not isolate to the Santa Barbara problem. This, this discrepancy is nationwide, Texas, back east, almost any articles you read about the topic and even studies by the national government have indicated that this is a problem nationwide. And so there's, there's, it's not something that we're doing necessarily different than the rest of the world, but I go right back to the truancy. There's a huge discrepancy in truancy, you know, and that starts at an early age, families and, you know, it just, it, but it's a national concern. We've got, we've got to work on it, but it, it's not an isolated situation here.
I, I wondered a little bit about the fact that truancy to me does not seem as subjective a call, but maybe, maybe that's not true.
Well, I think Dr. Hayden said it very well, that there apparently has not been in place an, an objective process by which those decisions get made so that there would be no difference from school site to school site, that be, that a truancy is a truancy is a truancy, sort of thinking. So, so I, I, yes, one would hope that we would have some very objective criteria that would be, you know, in place and every, everyone responsible for attendance, you know, and that while, while it would be probably easy to say, or, you know, I, you might, you might, I don't know if I could actually say it's kind of a cultural issue at a school because I don't really think it is. I think it really drills down to who is actually doing the reporting, which on all of our school sites is clerical staff. So I think, you know, probably a clear written set of procedures and expectations about what a truancy is, what an unexcused absence is and how you determine that would be helpful.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I think going back to the idea of the elephant in the room, I think we, you know, we have now seen a lot of data to basically tell us what we, I think everybody already knew. We could've asked the students, they would've told us. We see it as the board, we, we know this. We knew there was this disparity and that's in fact one of the reasons why we've undertaken why we've undertaken this whole discussion. So, none of this comes as a surprise, and I think the, the issue is why is this disparity occurring, and what can we do about it? What are we, one, what are we willing to do about it, and what are we able to do about it? And in looking at some of the language from the Denver documents, their policies and procedures, et cetera, it brings me back, because I have often said that I think one of our biggest issues is campus climate. And when we talk about truencies, we can, we tend to discuss it from the point of view of families and, and, you know, getting their children to school, et cetera. But I also question, why would students not be engaged in wanting to go to school? What is it that is accounting for why a larger percentage of Latino students feel disconnected from school or disengaged? And so I, I really feel like we need to be looking back and focusing on what's going on, on the campus that's causing students to be more likely to engage in inappropriate behavior, or what we might consider antisocial behavior, because of a lack of connection to the institution that they're attending. And when I look at the language in the Denver documents, and it talks about making sure that, you know, that all staff feel engaged with the students and are responsible for sort of the well-being of the students, when it talks about making, that the staff taking responsibility for making sure that they eliminate any disparate impacts of the, the policies and the implementation of the policies. And I feel like that's where we need to get to. Because we, we, I mean, we knew what the, we knew the data was going to be basically what it is, you know, within reason. We, we didn't know the exact numbers, but we knew it was going to tell us more Latino students are getting suspended, getting expelled, and being truant. And so I feel like we need to really get to that climate point in looking at what's happening and what's not happening, perhaps.
All right. Mrs. Parker?
And I, I agree with Mrs. Cordero, and maybe that's more part of the policy discussion as we move on to the next section, because I do think that that will make a big difference in both in terms of truencies and suspensions, and then flowing from that, expulsions. But back on the truancy data piece, I think that Mr. Beckio might be behind me. And if he is, I, I would appreciate having him come up, because I know that he has been doing cleanup on the Santa Barbara High truancy data this year, on the reporting piece, and maybe he can give us some more real specifics on what's happening this year.
Well, one of the major concerns I had going into this school year and taking over at Santa Barbara High was truancy, because it's, when I looked at that, it was, it's quite a bit higher, isn't it, than, than the other schools? And so, we took a really close look at that. I think it's, has a lot to do with school culture. And when I, and I also think within that is some, some of the policies and procedures that were in place that we took a close look at and did a, a very comprehensive restructuring on. And so we've been tracking that data, but what we'll find in the new data is we've cut that number in half from last year, and, and we looked at that after a month of school, and then we looked at that after a couple months of school, and we looked at that at the semester now. So, we'll see some significant improvements in that data, and it, it had to do with, I'll give you one example. There was this belief at Santa Barbara High that it's an open campus when, throughout the entire day. And, you know, the board policy is that it's an open campus during lunch, not through the whole school day. So what we tried to do is recapture that and start changing the school culture to, and we told every student, we told all the teachers, that Santa Barbara High is not an open campus except for at lunch. So if you, you can't just leave campus, you can't send a kid to go get a coffee for you. If you're a teacher or staff member, you, if you have a free period during the day, you can't leave campus. And then we started enforcing that and looking after that and giving some consequences for that. So that's just one example of how you can begin to change the culture. And, you know, it'll take some time. I've, I've kept saying to staff that it's going to take some time, because at the high school, you have kids that are there under a, one culture, and I only have a class of ninth graders that has the new set of rules. So, as we get kids that trickle through there, they'll begin to change the culture more significantly. And so, but that's, that's one example, I think, really lent itself to having a high rate of truancy at Santa Barbara High. And there are some procedural things we found that, that we really dialed in, and so some of it's human error. Actually, we, we found a lot of it to be human error in, in tracking. So, other specific, do you have specific questions for me about Santa Barbara High?
I guess if you talk, if you could talk a little bit more about human error, who's making the, is it, is it teachers in the classroom taking attendance, or is it clerical staff as they input it?
I think it's through the whole system. And Elise Simmons, who's here, has been working directly on attendance and truancy, but we've had, some of it might be teachers not clearing the absence, some of it might be parents that have called and, and, you know, we missed the message. We noticed that there was some of that going on. And some of it is the attendance office is trying to clear the absences, and then they don't hear back, and it goes unresolved. And so we've, you know, dialed in that process to where we're, you know, we're having people respond in a timely fashion to emails and telephone calls and getting all the messages and, and that kind of thing. So, I think it's just through the whole system. It's, it needed some revamping.
Thank you, Mr. Beckio. Actually, that's really encouraging. We look forward to fewer numbers for this year.
I have the numbers now for that email I was talking about. The oh-five-six was sixty-one percent truancy. This is Santa Barbara High School, and the ten-eleven was sixty percent. So the truancy rate was almost identical from when we had the truancy program to what was last year. But the expulsion rates is cut in half. So there's half as many expulsions last year than there was back in five-six. So that was a dramatic reduction in expulsions.
Okay. Maybe we will move on to the policy piece now, then. It sounds like we, I, I agree with Mrs. Cordero. I think the data unfortunately is not as surprising, and so now it's up to us to address it through policy. And, and the Denver model sounds interesting, but let's go ahead and talk about the policy. Oh, sorry, Mr. Sumter. Shall I call you Dr. Sumter?
If you want, it's okay. I'll, I'll respond either way. Well, there's basically two board policies that most directly apply to discipline or student conduct. Board policy fifty-one-thirty-one is titled conduct, and that basically spells out what the expected behaviors are, or what's appropriate behavior at school. And, you know, specifically listing some prohibited conduct, like disruptive behavior, and specific ones are conduct that endanger students or staff, you know, harassment, cyberbullying, which is an uptick of, of activity in recent years. You know, vandalism of school property or private property, plagiarism, profanity, and abusive language. Those are just a few. Even possession of a, or use of a laser pointer, which when I was a kid was, you know, just a toy, but it had become a dangerous item. Attendance is part of that, you know, leaving school grounds without permission. Mr. Beckio is part of the unacceptable behavior. So, that falls right into that part. Employees are expected to provide, you know, supervision and enforce standards of conduct, as mentioned in this policy. It also mentions that, of course, this applies to, to and from school, at-school related activities, or outside of the school hours that might be affecting or disrupting significantly a, a school activity. Then it specifically mentions use of cellphones or mobile communication devices as being prohibited, except for circumstances or situations where a licensed physician has, has deemed it essential for the student's health. Otherwise, it, it is permissible for academic purposes, as specifically stated by the school staff, but then it must be turned off or out of sight, not used besides that purpose. And then again, I mentioned cyberbullying and bullying, and outlines the, the options for filing a complaint with site staff for that. So that's basically, in a nutshell, what board policy fifty-one-thirty-one mentions. And then board policy and AR fifty-one-forty-four relates to more specifics of discipline and, and strategies involved in addressing discipline or, or student behavior. The board policy just mentions basically that the safety of students and staff and the maintenance of an, or, maintenance of an orderly school environment is of the utmost priority when determining appropriate discipline, and it is to be administered in a fair and consistent manner. The administrative regulation goes into much greater detail of what some of the discipline strategies are, and that site-level disciplinary policies can be established at the school level to address their specific needs as well. Some of the strategies mentioned when dealing with student behaviors and the discipline involved would be referrals for advice or counseling on a lower level, and then we get the parent and guardian conferences going. Detentions is also mentioned, and then restriction or disqualification from extracurricular activities, according to board policy and administrative regulation associated with that. Community service is an option for one strategy, transfers to alternative educational environment, and then, of course, we have the suspension and expulsions that we've been talking about today. There's an exhibit that goes along with board policy and AR fifty-one-forty-four, which is called Discipline Guidelines, and I believe you have that in your packets as well. And that, that is a matrix of the different infractions that go along with the, you know, the ed code, and what consequences are assigned to those different infractions. In your packets, you'll see that in this exhibit, each offense is listed by number, and the first four in the matrix refer to those big five, as I called it earlier, that are the mandatory expellable offenses. And you'll see that's included in there, the assault or battery on school employees. Then the remaining thirty-one or so of those, numbers five through thirty, are the suspendable and possibly expellable offenses, depending on the particular circumstances of the infraction. And those infractions include things like possession of a knife or other dangerous object, which is not a mandatory expulsion, but could be if the student is waving it at somebody. Typically, the approach to that has been a recommendation for expulsion because of the reasons kids usually have those, is for protection and that sort of thing. There's also causing serious physical injury, except in self-defense, with serious physical injury being defined as broken bones, disfigurement, extensive suturing, concussion, those kinds of things are part of that definition. Possession or under the influence of a controlled substance or an alcoholic beverage, or an intoxicant, aiding or abetting the infliction or attempted infliction of physical injury of someone else. Robbery and extortion, terroristic threats, fire setting, hate crimes and violence. And there's some very specific definitions that go along with some of these that are taken directly out of ed code or out of penal code and applied to things like hate crime or terroristic threats. Also, we have, and again, these are suspendable and potentially expellable offenses, but that includes obscene acts or habitual profanity or vulgarity, possessing, selling, or offering drug paraphernalia, even though the actual substance may not be involved. Then, you know, theft, or attempted theft, or possession of stolen property, and I'm just ticking through these here just real quick. Vandalism, use of tobacco or possession of tobacco, harassment, threats or intimidation, including electronics transmissions such as cyberbullying. Bias-related hazing, degrading slurs or disgracing another person, defiance and disobedience, sexual harassment, sales of look-alike substances, possession of unauthorized or inappropriate articles like, you know, pornographic material, or heavy chains, or misuse of electronic devices, falsification, forging, altering school correspondence, such as passes or readmits, insulting or abusing school staff on another campus without permission, academic integrity, misuse of technology, and possession of an imitation firearm. So there's a much more extensive list of the suspendable or potentially expellable offenses in the policy and in ed code. And like Dr. Cash said, there are five mandatory ones that require a recommendation for expulsion. Those are also then listed in that policy. Part of this presentation here, too, has to do with some mention or discussion of the Denver Public Schools policy, but I don't know if you would want to question or discuss any of that, of your current policies, of this district's policies, before we go into that, or do you want me just to move on with that?
Board, do we have an opinion on that? I, personally, I think it would be helpful for me to talk about the Denver policies in light of ours, because talking about ours, we know what ours are, and in the abstract, I don't know if that's going to move us forward. So, let's, by all means, let's move into the Denver.
And I'm sure you've read the attachments related to that, and you may have noticed that, that the Denver Public Schools policies are a little bit more, well, I see, I would say quite a bit more prescriptive or specific on what actions are to be taken in the specific events for different kinds of infractions. But as you looked at it, you probably also recognized that it is one that strongly encourages actions or some kind of intervention at the lower, lowest level possible, particularly meaning in the classroom to begin with. You know, the, the classroom management issue, and teachers taking care of those smaller types of infractions with their own classroom rules to begin with. And then it, it does also go on to say that some elevated consequences can occur if those behaviors don't change and, and they are repeated. But it does mention that the characteristics of the disciplinary practices include explicit and reasonable and timely enforcement. They should be logical, fair, and consistent. Amongst other things, they should provide the opportunity for significant parent and guardian and student participation. They ensure the opportunity for students to obtain an education, sort of like a teachable moment kind of thing from the discipline that's taking place. And that it also addresses the needs of the students who engaged in the misconduct, and those who were affected by the misconduct, and that needs, and the needs of the overall school community. It also, as, as we're talking here today, is the need to address any efforts that might make, eliminate the, any disproportionate or disparities that show up in the discipline processes. The discipline, the Denver Public Schools policy also mentions the consequences being reasonable, fair, and age-appropriate, and matching the severity of the infraction. And also that, that those who are administering the discipline, consequences need to consider things such as the age, health, and disability, or, or special education status of a student, the appropriateness of a student's academic placement, the student's attitude towards their behavior, and the discipline that's being administered, prior conduct of the student, the willingness to repair their harm, their harm, seriousness of the offense, and the impact on the overall school community. The Denver policy also separates the types of intervention strategies into three categories, meaning administrative, restorative, or skill, skill-based, or therapeutic. Administrative strategies being more defined as interventions that are done to the offender, things like detention and suspension and, or community service requirements, that sort of thing. The restorative strategies are more of a problem-solving intervention that's done with the offender. So they're involved and engaged in, in what takes place after the infraction. And then therapeutic or resource strategies are done by the offender, more or less meaning things like mental health counseling and anger management classes, and mentoring or behavior coaching. Also, those three strategies can be used independent of each other, or they can be in conjunction with each other, or as alternatives that can be selected. It's a rather, and I don't want to necessarily go very specifically page by page on this, but it goes on in, in section three to explain the detailed offenses and consequences and how they're handled. And the Denver policy or the Denver model uses the, the pyramid, or ladder, they call it, in this district, we call it a pyramid of intervention, but theirs is a ladder of intervention that, that, again, starts at the basic level of the classroom discipline, teacher working with a student, and ranges clearer up through all the, the, the different strategies can be used up to the suspendable offenses, and at what point each kind of infraction would start in that ladder or that pyramid. And so there's several pages that discuss that. Their matrix for their discipline consequences is a little bit more divided into levels of offense, more than the one for Santa Barbara Unified is. And that provides some guidance and, I guess, clarity on what kinds of, of...
and I guess clarity on what kinds of serious offenses deserve the more serious response or discipline than the lower-level ones and which ones actually should be including law enforcement or including expulsion. So those are included in the matrix and you also have, I believe in your packet, the discipline ladder explaining those specific, and outlining those specific responses to the different levels of offenses. There is also a very specific, and I'm not sure if this is in your packet or not, but it's kind of a matrix that does, and we can get this to you if you don't have it, but it is a very fine print matrix that they have similar to ours that shows the different levels. They don't have it. Okay, well, this speaks to all those levels in the pyramid or the ladder of intervention, ladder of discipline, but breaks it down into the specific kinds of infractions, whether or not, or which level it falls into in the pyramid or the ladder, and then a recommendation for the kinds of, whether it's an expellable recommendation or suspendable or just an office referral or some kind of lower-level type intervention. So, you know, that's kind of a broad brush of the policy and the documents you have in front of you, but suffice it to say that it is a more detailed description of what kind of interventions should be used, at what level they should be used, and guidance provided specifically to site-level administrators and staff on what should be done in certain situations. As compared to the Santa Barbara Unified policy, there is some, I guess discretion or not so much discretion, but it's looser in terms of what you do or how you respond specifically depending on the circumstances of each incident.
Okay, thank you. One thing I have to say I was struck by with the Denver model is how much they involve the students who are the ones who are involved in the misbehavior, but it's an effort to listen to them because I think so often young people feel their side of the story has not been heard. And there was a real emphasis on that in the Denver policy where they would bring the students in with the teacher or a principal or a parent and really listen to them talk about the experience and then talk about if there was a victim involved in a scenario, how they would work through that together. And that seemed like a real compelling part of that model.
Clearly in Denver, it's about getting, in many of the instances, to the root of the issue instead of responding to the student's behavior. And I think probably the key component is viewing every child as an individual. And in talking to Denver Public Schools staff, that was a very common theme.
So I guess I'll just start off. I actually really appreciated reading the Denver policies. And a few things that actually, maybe several of us noted in the policies were the fact that there was student input. This was very much throughout the process and even in the policy creation, you see places where they're asking and they solicit input from the student on how to move forward, and I thought that that was very important. I really appreciated the tiered response and the approach with three different types of interventions for the students. I think their argument is one size does not fit all. And I think that that does allow for the educators at each campus to make an assessment on, is it administrative, is it therapeutic, or is it restorative? What would best solve this? And a lot of this was actually about trying to change behavior, not just put a Band-Aid on a particular offense, if we call it. So I thought that that was very important. And, surprise, surprise, I love the fact that throughout the whole thing, they're talking about collecting data and the importance of making sure that there is consistency among each of our sites, but that also that the district understands what are really offenses, what are the offenses that are happening in our schools. I think, I read it and I thought it was very thorough and wanted our policy to be more like that. And this was without having the preface of the conversation that we had ten, twenty minutes ago, which was about subjectivity. Because our policies are looser, I think we have more subjectivity. I heard the word tossed out several times earlier in our conversation and that's a problem because it means that if I walk, if I'm a high school Latina female, I'm six times more likely not to be, to want to ditch or to want to do something, and that doesn't make sense to me. I think it doesn't have anything to do with the fact that I'm Latina and I don't want any of our students to feel like they're more likely to commit an offense because of their ethnicity or race. So I would be very interested in finding ways that we can minimize subjectivity and increase objectivity. And I think that through the Denver policies, we see more of that. Nothing's perfect, but I think that we definitely see more of that. And the other piece that I know I've had questions about that comes into this is the legal question of when do we have to? When are we required by law to bring in law enforcement? In our policy, there's several instances where if you look at the matrix, it says possible law enforcement. Well, if I'm a teacher there, it's to my discretion and I very well may have good reasons for doing it or not. So I think in all fairness to the folks that are at the school, they're not to be blamed for our vague policies. That's really coming from us. And so I have a question for Mr. Price. He can tell us when, we can't go through all thirty of these, but I specifically have one related to substance, illegal substances on the campus. Are we required to notify law enforcement at first offense? So if you look at, for example, number seven in our matrix.
The answer to your last question is yes, you are required. Just like we heard that there was the big five in terms of expulsion, the ED Code 48902 specifies four issues in particular that require notification to law enforcement for activities that occur on campus, to or from campus, at school-sponsored events, or that cause a substantial, if occurring off-campus, that have an associated substantial disruptive effect on campus. And that's a very questionable one because the U.S. Supreme Court just took up that case. But generally speaking, for campus-related offenses that comprise assault with a deadly weapon, firearms, explosives, or drug-related offenses, I think there are two different types, but they're basically drug-related offenses having to do with possession being under the influence of or selling. So those are the areas where the Education Code requires that school administrators report those activities. Beyond that, which I think you were alluding to, there is a much broader question of what types of additional activities should be reported to law enforcement and perhaps the associated question of what shouldn't. And I'll just throw out very briefly. First of all, generally speaking, school authorities have a privilege when it comes to reporting to law enforcement. Another way of saying it is that where it is deemed to be appropriate to report, school authorities should not refrain from reporting out of a fear of potential liability. That's no basis for a decision. But beyond that, the larger question is what types of things ought to be reported. And I would think that your staff and your board at the appropriate time might, if you haven't already, want to pursue a discussion of that. So that, for example, where the type of, let's just talk about off-campus behavior. What happens if a principal hears about offenses that occur off-campus? When is it appropriate for that to be reported? Perhaps one might conclude that if the activity involves a significant peril to the acting-out student or to others, that it might be viewed as being highly responsible for the school official to report it as opposed to something that would be much more modest. But I think that those types of issues, both in terms of off-campus behavior for which there would be no discipline, but we're just talking about pure reporting, or on-campus behavior for offenses that don't rise to the level of those which I outlined as being, having mandated reporting requirements.
So if we look at our policies, am I to believe that any time that says law enforcement notification, it's because it's mandated? And where it says possible, it's because it's not mandated? And this is in the exhibit? So there's thirty items, some say law enforcement notification, some say possible law enforcement notification.
You have those in front of you, Craig? Here.
Well, let's just take the first one. Let's see.
And I think the first ones are actually part of the first five, so maybe some of the...
It actually looks like numbers one through seven say law enforcement notification, and then beyond that, it starts mentioning possible law enforcement notification.
Right. So it's on page two and three. Yes, I did note those. It would be my belief that some of the items on the first two pages that call for law enforcement notification rather than qualifying it in terms of may include things that are both required under the ED Code and some things that are not required by the ED Code.
So what about number seven? I think I asked about that one, but I know Colorado treats it differently. But, and I suspect that will come up again in some time in the future, in the near future for us.
ED Code Section 48902C says, notwithstanding so-and-so, "The principal or designee shall notify appropriate law enforcement authorities of any acts of the pupil that may involve the possession or sale of narcotics or of a controlled substance or a violation of section so-and-so, so-and-so of the Penal Code." So there is an ED Code mandatory reporting requirement. I haven't tried to parse it out by going back to the Penal Code and determining whether that covers, this talks about possession or sale, and I'm not sure if it would also include being under the influence of, but that's somewhat of a collateral issue.
Well, I think that that may be coming to the board in the near future in a related discussion, so there might be some benefit in knowing the difference between possession, well, sale we know, but possession as a whole. So I guess, I mean, with that, I don't even know where to go now. Do we just start going through the policies? But I was definitely more inclined to look at our policies and consider the tiered approach, the emphasis on data collection and student input in ways that our policies don't do that, so I'll leave it there.
Mrs. Parker.
Well, following up on that, I think that it's good to note that there are differences in law between Colorado and California, so if there are many things that we love in the Denver policy that we cannot do. I also liked the Denver policy as something to compare with our policies. One question I had is, do we have the Denver Unified data? Do they have, what do their numbers look like in terms of ethnicity for suspension and expulsion and truancy?
I'd hope to get it today, don't have it. I've requested it.
That would be great to know because it'd be silly to go forward with it if it doesn't actually have any...
I can tell you I've read all the summaries of the data. I haven't actually viewed the data. And the summaries they report in that are reported by independent evaluators indicate substantially different results than that have been presented to you this evening from our school district.
Great. The discipline guidelines that we have for 5144 weren't created by the board, they were created by a committee of assistant principals back in 2008, and they did, put a lot of work into it. And we adopted probably about ninety-five percent of it, I would say, Mrs. Cordero, and then we tweaked some language and some results, and we've done a little bit of tweaking since then, but very minor. To me, I really think that this speaks to a district committee that's probably broader than just assistant principals this time, that includes teachers, maybe high school students as part of the discussion. But looking at our data, looking at our policies, our current exhibit, our current guidelines, and then seeing what Denver is doing, and then coming forward with revised guidelines, and I want to say revised guidelines for now because I know we're about to talk about the restorative justice piece, recommendation there is that we have a pilot school for 1213. And I know that currently administrators, when they have the time and when they feel it's appropriate, are already doing an informal restorative justice process when they can. But this is really talking about formalizing it, this is talking about bringing teachers into training for it. I know that teachers would have concerns about the amount of time and that they would need to put on it. I want to be sure that teachers are all part of that. I think it's really appropriate to have a pilot, but I also don't want to wait. I don't want to sit on this and have it take two years for us to see our numbers start to move. And so I really feel like we need to do some work right now on the discipline guidelines so that even though they're going to be a work in progress and hopefully we go through restorative justice and have a successful pilot next year, then we adapt it again, but that we work on it right now so that we're not waiting two years before we see changes.
Mrs. Cordero.
I would echo a lot of what's been said, but my concern is, I feel like we need to analyze the underlying causes of this because as I was mentioning before, I don't, I mean, I would, I want us to go through the whole process and develop a more, I would use the word humane, approach to student discipline, that I want us to have a really supportive policy and implementation strategy, et cetera. But I don't want us to end up at the end with a more humane disciplinary process that still affects three Latinos for every one white student. You know, I would be happy if we're treating students more, you know, supportively, but I still don't want it to be affecting more Latino students than it ought to be. So unless we're figuring out why our current process is disproportionately impacting one student subset, I fear that we will simply take those same factors and unintentionally, but sort of institutionally...
Replicate.
...impose them on a new structure. So I feel like we need to not lose the issue of why is it currently disproportionately impacting Latino students? Because whether we're doing the right thing or the wrong thing is one issue, but right or wrong, we're doing it more to Latino students than we are to white students. So, you know, we can do it better, but we still have to address that issue.
Can I respond to that?
I was going to ask you to, thank you.
Sure. I think, and I agree with you, I think part of the issue for our district and for all school districts is that we have structures in place, policies, practices, procedures...
procedures, that in and of themselves create results like what you see and what we've seen in the national reports. And I think it goes back to something I've said fundamentally, that public schools in America are, reflect a predominantly white, middle-class structure and value system. So, and in Santa Barbara, that is not the predominant students that we serve in Santa Barbara. So I think in what, in talking, I had a long conversation with Carlos Garcia, who's the superintendent in San Francisco, I've known for many, many years. San Francisco is just going through adopting, two years ago, their restorative justice and creating some model schools. This is their first year. And talking to him about how does it affect the, some of the underlying concerns? I didn't know you were going to ask that question, but I kind of felt that might come up in the conversation today. And he said, I won't say exactly what he said, I'll paraphrase it, but, "Dave, it changes school climate because teachers in particular begin to see how they relate to students in a different way." There is an awakening in classroom teachers about how they interact with students and how they develop relationships with students. So that was his response. I'm not, I'm not stating that's the panacea that's going to cure all our ills, but I found that very instructive and very hopeful, and also very helpful for me. And, and, you know, I can get to it right now if we, if the board did direct me to develop some sort of way in which to create a pilot program, which is my recommendation. The most important part of that is assessing the readiness of the school to engage in a very different way in which they look at how kids come to school and how kids act in school and how to keep kids engaged in school. Because from my, my perspective, the data we see reflects a lack of student engagement. So I don't think that addresses all the issues that are inherent in your question, but I think the idea that we would, if we did adopt more of our sort of justice model, we would, as a result of just that model, change the behavior, and I think change the climate.
I also wonder if, if we were to ask, they might not know why. They might not be able to tell us that they're acting in a way that necessarily impacts these students negatively, that they don't know that's happening. And I think we know a lot of times institutional racism happens that way. The, the group that met together, the Summit for Academic Achievement for Latino Youth, I know one of their recommendations was, besides eliminating institutional racism, was to work to eliminate the effects of internalized racism, so Latino students could see themselves as learners capable of high achievement. And so I, I see the Denver model feeding right into that construct where you're really building up students and, and like you said, engaging them. And I, and I think on so many levels, in our curriculum, we know there's places where we could do a better job of engaging our students through our course offerings, through the instruction in the classroom. And so it won't be just a matter of the discipline policies. It'll be changing school culture, which is what we're talking about. Dr. Cash, I know you had a presentation you wanted to give us.
Sure, I can talk, talk about that. You know, in doing research on restorative justice, really it comes down to, if you look at it nationally, and if you talk to the people who are interested in it, they do it for three reasons. One is because there's high suspension or expulsion rates. Two, they want to change the school climate. Or three, they have a huge achievement gap and they're looking to improve academic performance and student progress. And all three of those things, I think, exist in Santa Barbara as rationale as to why we might want to look. I don't think we could say that it's, we don't have high suspension or expulsion rates, we don't need to improve our school climate, alls we need to look at is academic success. I think all three are apropos for why we might want to explore that. I think I've listed some of the, what it is, but I think probably you heard some of that in Marlin's presentation. I think for an educator, part of the most important, what is restorative justice is, is that it gives students an opportunity to repair the harm that they may have caused as a result of their behavior. It is an opportunity for that teachable moment that Marlin talked about, which truly, if internalized, can change prospective behavior by students and really cause an ultimate transformation in who they are and how they, and who they become. And I think that's really important. I think as Ms. Limone also said, one of the key elements to restorative justice is student participation. And in talking to Denver Public Schools, they held student forums and asked students all along the way, "What do you think about this? What are we missing here? Does, will this make sense to you?" If you're in a conference talking to another student about this, what would the conversation actually be like? Would it be, you know, me, the adult, kind of leading the way? Or would this be a valuable process for you to engage in? If not, what, what would make it more valuable for you as far as learning goes? Which I think is very important and something that the, the kind of traditional do-it-to-the-kids model never takes into consideration, you know? I think, and I put in my memo, you know, kind of what the conference would consist of, the kind of questions that you'd ask kids, and the kind of questions you might ask, quote, "the victim," or the other, the other kids that were involved in it, or the community of students, which I also think is very important, which, you know, you talk to educators, I talked to Tony Smith in Oakland, which is also pursuing restorative justice. And he was telling me that one of the things he likes best about it is this latter part, the fact that in restorative discipline, you're, you're engaging the entire community oftentimes. And students often see their behavior in a very isolated way. It's just me and you. And they don't see the impact of me and you has with everyone else in the room, in the classroom, in the school. And engaging that entire group also is a great teachable moment for kids. And for those kids who aren't involved in that, maybe me against you or me versus you moment, who are seeing it and learning about it as part of that community. I, I would propose moving to it to change our school climate. To me, that's the most important thing that we can do. As I said, I could give you, now, well, I predict that we would reduce truancy. I would predict that we would reduce suspensions. I would predict that we would reduce expulsions. All really important things to do. But I think those things would happen because the climates on schools would change. Kids would feel more engaged. They'd feel that they're part of what's happening as opposed to it happening to them. And I think those are extraordinarily important things for children as they grow up. Very developmentally appropriate. Kind of the process for doing it, and I, what's very interesting to me in talking to the, you know, those are big school districts, but demographically not dissimilar to Santa Barbara as far as the percentage of students who are economically disadvantaged, the percentage of students who are, quote, minority students. Very clear, all of them said, "You must do a pilot school." Carlos Garcia was very specific in saying what his, what's happening in San Francisco is that lots of little bits of very, and I know the principals in this district are, you know, are gonna, especially those that feel it's really appropriate and important and want to do it now, are going to want to start doing it, doing it, doing it, and do little bits of it. And so things don't get implemented with fidelity. And what someone may call, "We're doing restorative discipline," essentially creates a false impression or presents a false picture to the community, and in particular to the students and parents, which from his perspective is very, has been damaging. So he's had an actual assistant soup that's kind of had to ride herd on some principals to say, you know, "We got, we picked three schools and they're the ones that are doing it. The rest of you guys, we're all going to learn as we move along, but they're the three implementers of restorative discipline." And, you know, they've got the same message essentially from the Denver Public School staff as well, is that they had one school do it in Denver Public Schools. So I would propose that, and I, all three, Denver, Oakland, San Francisco, all said, "Pick a middle school." And I said, "Well, we don't have any middle schools in Santa Barbara." "What?" He said, "We have junior highs." "Well, pick a junior high." And all three felt that the junior high was the, probably the best locus because it's really a nexus and a jumping-off point for kids for their academic career, where they move from a self-contained environment with one teacher all day long to an environment with kids from all different kinds of schools, all different kinds of neighborhoods, and having to deal with anywhere from five to seven different adults throughout the day with different, differing sets of expectations, et cetera. All thought that was the best place to go. All three schools have their own way in which they assess the kids. I, I'm getting that, not the kids, excuse me, the schools and the school community as to the readiness level to really be a school that could pilot restorative justice. The most important part is teachers, obviously. I mean, they're the most important people in our system to begin with. They do the most important work in our schools and make the biggest difference for children each and every day. And it really is, teachers have to be interested and willing to engage in some transformational change in how they relate to kids' behavior in their classrooms and on their campuses. All three schools reported, and I know Marlin, I think, has heard the same thing, there will be significant resistance to this by parents, by some students, by staff, members of the community. You're soft on crime. I've already heard that from members of our community in Santa Barbara. That's restorative justice is a bunch of baloney. It's kids getting away with murder. There will be resistance that will be explicit like that, and then there will be obviously some resistance that is, I think, probably more damaging, and that's the more passive resistance. I also heard very loud and clearly from Carlos and Tony that their belief and their study, and they had teams in Denver Public Schools, and I think it would make sense for us to make a visit to Denver Public Schools as well, that it cannot be something that is done by itself. Ta-da, we're now doing restorative justice. That it has to be part of a larger plan, a larger reform package. Carlos says it's one of his top items in the district's strategic plan. And, you know, when I told him, "Well, we're in the process of creating a strategic plan," and he thought that would, you know, "Hopefully your, your, your board will feel the same and they'll think that that should be a component." Standing alone in and of itself, I think it needs, I would agree with that, it should be part of a larger thing. It also takes away from the idea that it's just another program. All three superintendents said that the first step is at the board level, which is what we're doing. I didn't know that would be the right first step. I just learned that recently. I'm glad that, that this is the most important conversation to happen first, is what are the policies? How does, how does the board setting policy about the direction it's going to give at schools in relationship to discipline and school climate? And that board policies need to be examined and redrawn to reflect a change and an opportunity for this transformation in school culture. So kind of the timeline that I tentatively put together was that we would have this workshop, that you would give me an opportunity to identify a pilot school within the next month or so, that we would bring back to you sometime in February, some ideas, some board policies that would reflect what we're heard and what we, what we've seen. I, I want to give you an opportunity to look at Oakland and San Francisco's as well, because I think that's important. Those are both California school districts and reflect what's happening in our state. I couldn't agree more with Ms. Parker's comment on getting together and having another look at that exhibit. And I think that's a, that's a, that's a big group conversation. That's not a Dave and Marlin in a, in a dark room poring over the exhibit, but a larger group with lots of input from classroom teachers, assistant principals, at the high school level. I'd really like to get some kids involved in that as well, hear what they say about it. And that we would try to do that through February. You'll note, I built into the timeline, we have to develop an evaluation model. It was very clear that San Francisco and Denver did that and have been collecting data. I'd like to then, as, when we've got it together, present it to the board, the, how we plan to train the school that's been identified, and what evaluation procedures and processes that we'd engage in. And then sometime in the spring, we'd like to look to introducing it to that school community and begin talking to staff about what it would look like for next year. All three districts made the same, made this, something similar to this comment, this last comment from me as well. And that is, and Carlos is experiencing this now, it, there is no way that somebody's going to implement it and you're going to have, after one year, you're going to be able to evaluate it. It's, it takes time because it is a real change in what happens. You know, and kind of right now, if a student does this, goes to the office, pretty much this happens to that student. And the, this happening to that student will no longer occur. And so that's, that's, that's a transformation. That's a transformational experience for our administrators that are involved in that, and for our teachers and understanding that, that something different is going to happen to those students, and that student may be right back in that teacher's class, you know, the next day, the next period, the next hour. And so that, that's really important, and that's going to take a conversation, a lot of conversations, and some, you know, missteps and some gnashing of teeth, most likely. So I would love to get direction from you to march down this path because I think it's in the best interest of the children in our community. So, love to take any questions.
We are actually scheduled for a break at 5:30. I'm going to pull the board and see if you'd like to go ahead and take that break and then come back.
It's fine.
Okay. Okay. I think we're going to do that. We're going to take a fifteen-minute break. We'll be back at 5:45.